All right, let's get this going in the audience, please. So we want to make sure you to partake and observe here everything that's going to be happening today. A lot of important things happening. So the December thirteen twenty-two regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six thirteen P M. I will ask our councilwoman emeritus to do both the invocation and the pledge of allegiance today, please.
May we bow our heads. Almighty God, thank you for bringing us to this place where we can show that we are true Americans and observe the peaceful transition of power. This is part of the American experience. We want to congratulate all of the newcomers and wish them well and to and to say bless the city of Hawthorne and all of its residents and everything the city is trying to accomplish for the benefit of its citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by nature, and to the people, liberty, justice for all.
All right, folks, welcome to the council meeting today. It's going to be the last one of the year. There's a couple of things as the last one of the year. We're going to be wishing our council colleague who is leaving and our treasurer and our city clerk, wishing good travels and have fun while you know away from the council. I'm pretty sure they have a lot of fun away from councils as well. But we're also going to have new council colleague and we're going to recognize our council member colleague that was reelected as well. And then our new city clerk and our new city treasurer. And because of that, we have a lot of important people in the audience, so I just want to just quickly recognize them. We'll start off with our local folks, our commissioners that are here with us. So we have a lot of our commissioners that are here present. We have our state senator Steve Bradford, who is in the audience. We have a new county supervisor Lindsay Horvath, who is here amongst us today. Maxine Waters representatives. And we also have a cabine college board president, Nilo Michelin. And I don't know if I mentioned superintendent Mark Carrion from the Hawthorne School District is here as well. Okay, and members of the clergy, members of the community, activists. We even have candidates who ran, who did not win, but are here to lend their support to those who are joining the council and the city council dais. So that's really honorable of them, okay, class act, okay, so. So let's give it up for everybody and welcome everybody to City Hawthorne. I think that's awesome. Our first item tonight is a presentation by state Senator Steve Bradford. He will be giving us a legislative update and he might have a couple of presentations. Mr. Senator, welcome. Let's give him a round of applause. One thing I do want to mention, Senator Bradford, is that you have been a regular person at our council meeting. So I give you kudos because you come and you give us a report. You tell us what's going on, you give us an opportunity to, you know, give you feedback. So I mean, that's really good. And I can't really say that about other members from Sacramento, but we're getting the having that experience with Tina McKinner, our assemblywoman, so that's great and we thank her too. So thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say happy holidays and first congratulations for those newly elected elected officials, as well as congratulations for those outgoing members who have served this city so admirably over the years. It is truly an honor to come before this board as stated by the mayor. This has been a practice that I've had for the last twelve years. First, as your assemblyperson, now as your senator to provide a legislative update. I represent the thirty-fifth Senate District, which is probably the most diverse Senate District in the state of California, with City of Hawthorne being one of seven cities that comprise the thirty-fifth Senate District. And I'm honored to chair public safety in the Senate. I was immediate outgoing chairman of the Legislative Black Caucus and now assume the role of vice chair as of last Monday. Our legislative year goes from January to September. Our year ended on September one, and usually I make this presentation sometime around October, but due to the elections and all the things that were going on, we're just doing it tonight. And officially, our twenty twenty-three legislative session has started, started last Monday. So but we'll be back in Sacramento full time back in January. I just just quickly wanted to provide an update. We had a very ambitious year legislatively, as well as budgetarily for the state of California. We passed the largest budget in the history of California, a three hundred billion dollar budget with a thirty-seven billion dollar reserve. And I should want to note that it was, like I say, historic, but I don't want to have anyone expect that's going to be what we face next year because we've already are looking at a budget shortfall. So this might be the last time we have a surplus like this. But I just want to highlight also, if you haven't received your money, we've budgeted nine point five billion dollars dollars for a direct relief for the majority of Californians in the form of a tax refund. And those refunds started in October. So if you haven't gotten it, maybe you're not eligible like myself, but most of Californians did receive it. But I'm not one of those who will receive it. We also provided two billion dollars for our small businesses. As we've seen over the last eighteen months to two years since this pandemic, our small businesses were impacted the hardest. And so there's two billion dollars to help not only small businesses, but our nonprofits as well. We also provided two hundred million dollars for to support women's reproductive rights. Though we were successful in passing Proposition One, we still put money in the budget to make sure that women have those resources necessary to do what they choose with their bodies. We also increased our discretionary funding for our schools. There's nine billion dollars there for ongoing maintenance and support for our school districts. We also allotted forty-seven billion dollars for infrastructure, including transportation, school facilities, housing projects, libraries, waterworks, and more. And understanding that housing is key, we provided two billion dollars for affordable housing, as well as another two billion dollars for student housing. As many know, most of our, I shouldn't say most, but many of our college students find themselves sleeping in their cars in parking lots on many of our college campuses. So hopefully, we can build the necessary housing that we need in order for those students to live comfortably. Also, we provided a one billion dollar stipend and retention fund for our healthcare workers as we saw again during the pandemic. Our frontline medical personnel were leaving, overworked and leaving the industry at large numbers. So this is an incentive to hopefully not only retain, but recruit more folks in this critically needed area. And we also expanded Medicaid for all eligible Californians, regardless of the immigration status, which is a twenty-one percent increase to CalWorks recipients. So taking a major step to make sure that no child or family is left in poverty. And again, as the state, and there's another year of drought and all those other climate impacts, we've also put nineteen billion dollars for climate and injury related measures. And as stated, a thirty-seven billion dollar reserve. This year, I introduced twelve measures. Of those twelve, eight made it to the governor's desk. Of those eight, six were signed. Like I say, it's if it was in baseball, I'd be batting five hundred, but for me, that was a bad year. But we were able to provide legislation that would help a variety of areas. First is S B thirteen forty-eight, which is escrow agents licensure denial for drug offenses. This removes offenses involving controlled substances from the list of crimes requiring automatic license denial under escrow laws administered by the Department of Financial Protection. These changes will allow former offenders to achieve meaningful employment. So they will no longer be denied just because they had a slight little ding. Also, thirteen, S B thirteen ninety-six is tenant credit reporting. Last year, I passed S B eleven fifty-seven, which requires landlords of assisted living developments to offer tenants the option to have their on-time payments reported in order to build credit so those renters can eventually become homeowners. As we all know, we probably know individuals who have been renters for ten, twenty, thirty years, pay their rent on time and have nothing to show for it. This measure will now allow folks to report, those landlords to report those payments up until July one of twenty twenty-five to build credit. Yeah. Again, it will provide oversight and means to conduct a third-party evaluation as well. Thirteen thirty-four, unpaid nursing hours. Again, during the pandemic, we found out that many of our nurses and medical assistants in the public sector were denied lunch breaks and rest periods. This bill will include public workers to provide patient, who provide patient care and support in hospitals and clinics and our public health settings and guaranteeing enforceable meal breaks and rest periods for our U C nurses and other public sector workers. As we all know, a well-rested medical provider provides high-quality care to those patients who need it the most. And also thirteen seventy, I mean thirteen seventeen, which is the pawnbroker's consumer privacy. It requires pawnbrokers to collect and record the serial numbers of all items used as collateral in the personal information of the customer. Only the serial number, though, will be entered into the cap system, protecting the personal information of customers. Before that, they were providing individuals' personal information, which would allow anyone, I shouldn't say anyone, but it would allow law enforcement just to open up an investigation into one's private records. Now you only will have, law enforcement will only have access to the serial numbers of those items that were pawned. And S B fourteen sixty-nine is the water decoupling. This authorizes water utilities to utilize a rulemaking process referred to as decoupling, which eliminates the incentive for water utilities to increase water use in order to increase profits. This is going to promote conservation. As we all know, we've been in a drought for the last couple of years. So this is going to help conserve water, but at the same time reduce water rates. And then S B fourteen seventy-six, which is the Water Replenishment District Contracting, which amends the Water Replenishment District Act to provide flexibility for the purchase of materials, equipment, supplies, and professional services. This bill also streamlines the purchasing authority and execution of contracts by government boards and district managers. It's been supported by all our local surrounding water agencies. So it's hopefully it's a good measure that will, again, promote conservation and keep water rates low. And last, I would like to just share some of the money I was able to secure for the district, maybe not specifically to Hawthorne, but district-wide. First, I want to start out with forty million dollars that was secured for Allensworth. And even though Allensworth is not in our district, if you know the history, last year I was able to author S B seven nine six, which returned the property to the Bruce family, the property in Manhattan Beach that was stolen from those families. And as I shared with the governor earlier this year, I says, if you were moved by what we were able to do with Bruce's beach, which was to return the property that was a business that the Bruce family started, as well as six other families that were displaced, well, Allensworth is Bruce's beach on steroids. If you know the history of Allensworth, it's an African-American town that was formed in nineteen oh eight by Colonel Allensworth. It was a town that was funded, financed, and governed by African-Americans. And due to its success, racial activity in the community by the KKK, they cut off the train stop, they poisoned the well, and poisoned their crops, and all but decimated the town by nineteen fourteen. It is now a state park, but if you visit it, it is not representative of what our state's parks should be. So this forty million dollars hopefully will help restore and bring it up to the level that it's so needed. Thank you. We also secured five point two million dollars for Angels For Sight. I don't know if you're familiar, it's a nonprofit here in Southern California that provides eyeglasses for needy children. Most of the time, when you see a child that's not performing well in school, they think it's about ability. Sometimes when kids are even acting out in school, they think it's about attitude and discipline. But many times, they can't see the board. So Angels For Sight will be providing free eyeglasses to those most needy kids. So this five point two million dollars will help provide glasses for those students. Also, we secured seven million dollars for Inner City Youth Orchestra of Los Angeles, better known as Iola. This is the most diverse orchestra of young people, not in California, but in America, of African-American and Latino kids who perform at the Disney Hall. But many times, they didn't own their instruments, they didn't own their own music, and they didn't have a home. Hopefully, with the seven million dollars, they will be able to provide a permanent home for Iola. They'll be able to secure and have a library of their own music, and they can purchase their own instruments versus getting used instruments that many of the universities and colleges around the neighborhood provided them. So this is historic. And we secured five point two million dollars to nurture and promote entrepreneurship and small business creation. It's under the Entrepreneurial Education Center Incorporated. It's an organization that was started in Watts that provides, like I say, entrepreneurial training for small business operators, especially minority and women-owned folks who want to start their business, and also helping young folks in coding and computer literacy. So they're doing great work, and so we just wanted to help continue that. And then just close to home, we were able to secure twelve million dollars for the Artesia Bridge on the ninety-one freeway. If you've been there and gotten off of Alameda over the last couple of years in Santa Fe, that has been closed for almost a decade now because of some problems. So hopefully, this will help us reopen that section so you can ingress and egress on the freeway right there on Alameda. And we secured two million dollars for the city of Gardena for Gardena Boulevard revitalization. So I will end with that and just state that I also am one of nine members who sit on the reparations task force. So when I leave here tonight, I'll be getting on the plane to Oakland. We have a task force meeting tomorrow and Thursday in Oakland as we flesh out what reparations will look like for those descendants of chattel slavery here in this country and in the state. And many people say, well, why is California leading the way in reparations when we didn't have slavery here? We, only a name only. The first governor, governor of California owned slaves. The first governor of California had an edict to remove all African-Americans from the state of California in eighteen fifty, but it was ruled unconstitutional. So we do have a debt to pay to those descendants of slavery. So we'll be having our meetings tomorrow and Wednesdays, I mean Thursdays. So I encourage you to watch it online if you can. And we'll continue our quest to do what we can to make sure that we right the wrong here in California. So and across the nation. So on that note, I will end right there because I know you have a full agenda of swearing in new members and all the work. So thank you for this opportunity. If you have any questions, I'd be more happy answering them at this time.
Thank you so much, sir. I'm going to give thirty seconds for all those people that are outside to come and find a seat. Right now's a good opportunity. We got thirty seconds. Anybody who's outside, find a seat inside. Let's tell everybody outside. We want to make sure everybody's able to be here in the room. Okay, so it's a good opportunity.
To the chair.
Yeah, you could go ahead, Will.
Thank you, Member Bradford, for your legislative briefing. Always appreciate your hard work that you're doing in Sacramento on behalf of the people of California, more importantly, the district that you represent. And thank you so much for all the giving that you're doing on behalf of many causes, obviously, that you said here tonight. And so thank you for even taking the time to be here with us tonight. Appreciate that greatly.
Thank you, councilwoman.
People in the back, take a seat, please. There's enough seats over here. There's some seats up front. Okay. Anybody else want to say anything while people are finding a spot? Okay. All right. Let's get the councilwoman-elect with her in here so she could just find a spot up here. You have a spot up here, councilwoman-elect.
In the front, right there.
Oh, yeah, at this point. There we go, there we go. And the treasurer-elect and the city clerk-elect, whoever that, I hope they're in here somewhere. Okay. Next, we will be presenting certificates of appreciation for City Treasurer Fallon, City Clerk Jimenez, and Councilmember Valentine. Go ahead, Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone. Mr. Fallon is not able to be here because he's out of town, but he did send us an email saying thank you for the opportunity that we gave it to him two years ago when we appointed him as a treasurer. And he sent his regards and wished everybody a happy Christmas and happy holiday. And and we want to just say thank you to Mr. Fallon for his two years of service. So on that note, I'll say we'll send him his proclamation. I'm not going to read it because of time. Thank you.
Okay, so so you did a.
I did.
Who has, okay.
Paul Jimenez.
Paul Jimenez, go ahead, whoever has his, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. As former city clerk, it's my honor to proclaim and honoring Dr. Paul Jimenez, our outgoing city treasurer, excuse me, city clerk, for all the work that he did in the office and and his efforts. Tonight, we have Diana representing the clerk's office. He couldn't be here tonight, but sends his regards. And we'd like to just also acknowledge him. And there's a there's a lot of reading here in the resolution. And so I'll reserve that and just thank him for all the work that he's done on behalf of the people of Hawthorne. Thank you.
And I have a recognition for our council colleague who is here with us today, Councilwoman Olivia Valentine, who has a big supporter, been a big supporter of the arts, good business here in the city of Hawthorne and many other things. So I think this is a very comprehensive document here, so I'll try to start. I mean, it's kind of small, but wait a minute. Though luckily, I have good eyesight still. Whereas, Councilmember Olivia Valentine has taken an active interest in initiatives that improve the quality of life for Hawthorne residents, such as approving grants which have continued to improve the city's roads, highways, and parks, and initiatives which bring economic development. She's initiated an ordinance requiring new shopping centers and those with a history of burglaries and police calls to work with the police department to develop security plans. She's initiated ordinances which require shopping centers to clean their premises at least once every twelve hours and keep the premises free of graffiti, litter, debris, and weeds. She's worked tirelessly to promote economic development in the city of Hawthorne through the Taste of Hawthorne, the Economic Development Council, and through her Business Expo. She brought Phantom Galleries L A to Hawthorne, which is a company that revitalizes communities with art and sets up exhibits and empty storefronts. She's also, Olivia wanted to create in Hawthorne the same sense of community and well-being that she saw in other cities where people were dining outdoors. So she was a big supporter of outdoor dining as opposed as COVID permitted. Okay, once COVID was over, we reinitiated and we got back on track with regards to that. For the past seven years, Olivia has held, has led the team of business owners and city staff to produce the Hawthorne Business Expo with the goal to showcase Hawthorne businesses and give them the information and tools they need to sustain their viability and help them grow. The event features a panel discussion, seminars, and an exhibition of at least seventy businesses which participate to display their products and services and to network with each other. Olivia has also represented her city, our city, on a variety of regional boards and is a past chairperson of the South Bay City Councils of Government, the South Bay Cog that you guys always hear about. In that capacity, she's promoted the South Bay Cog's initiatives to establish the South Bay Fiber Network, an award-winning fiber optic network developed by the South Bay Cog to provide the critical infrastructure to enable high-speed, low-cost internet connectivity for South Bay cities. The City of Hawthorne City Council does formally recognize and honor with great pride in acknowledging our colleague, Olivia Valentine, for her great achievements, her community contributions, dedication, and commitment to the city of Hawthorne and its people. We wish you all the best in all your future endeavors as you embark on your new journey this thirteenth day of December twenty twenty-two. Sign, it's been signed by all of your colleagues here.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the city manager to actually present this to you. This is coming from the employees. Go ahead, this is a very special thing. Do you want to just talk about it?
Yeah, just really quick. Good evening, everyone. Olivia, that calendar doesn't describe the work that you put in the city, but it is twelve months of fantastic work. And every month that goes by, I'd like you to take a look at it to see the difference you made in Hawthorne. Congratulations and goodwill to you as you set off to your next adventure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. This afternoon, as I walked around saying farewell to the staff at City Hall, I realized that I was saying goodbye to many of the same people that had welcomed me to my position as a council member all those years ago. It was brought to my mind anew that the staff is constant. It is the staff that makes the city run. From the Public Works Department that writes the grants that pay for our streets to be repaired, to the Finance Department that maintains the city's accounting system and makes certain we can pay our bills, to the City Attorney's Office that makes certain the city's actions are lawful, to the Hawthorne Police Department, which maintains a constant vigilance to keep the citizens safe, all work together like a finely tuned machine to make Hawthorne a great city to work, live, and raise your families. So I want to thank all of the staff today for helping. all of the staff today for helping me whenever I needed help. And there were many times I called upon you in your various capacities. Special thank you to City Manager Vaughn Norris, City Attorney Robert Kim, to Rebecca and Patty and the administrative staff. Thank you to Diana in the city clerk's office. I also want to thank my council colleagues for the many times you supported me with your votes, for proposals I initiated. And a special thanks to Mayor Vargas for his support. It is always a team effort to advance proposals that move the city forward. It has been my great honor to have served as your council member. I will continue to be of assistance in any way I can whenever needed. Thank you.
Let's join our colleague down there for a picture with her certificate. Okay, so we do have somebody else. And we have a presentation from our state senator. Thank you, sir, for stepping up right there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I too just wanted to say thank you for your service, Ms. Valentine. I've known you before you got elected. I've followed you during your career. And you will truly be missed, but never forgotten. Your impact will, as described, will be lasting here in the city of Hawthorne and the surrounding areas in the South Bay. And we thank you for your work, as stated with the Cog. And just on behalf of the state of California, I just wanted to present this certificate. I'm not going to read it, but just it reflects all that has been shared too. So on behalf of the state of California and a million people that I represent in the 35th Senate District, we just want to say thank you and congratulations for your work.
Thank you so much, Senator Bradford. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We do have someone else that is leaving us. Our police chief, Mike Ishi. Hello. Let's say hello to him, everyone.
Tell him to come to the podium.
And yeah, come on to the podium. Come up here.
Please come on.
About this one this time. Yeah, no, this is a special case, my friend. Go ahead.
Thank you. Whereas Chief Ishi was selected Hawthorne's police chief in January of 2019 after being appointed interim chief in October of 2018. And whereas, with a complement of over 160 employees, Chief Ishi administered a department that prides itself on implementing innovative ways to provide public safety services and continuing to evolve and meet the challenges of present-day law enforcement. And whereas, Chief Ishi has been with the Hawthorne Police Department since 1990, first as a reserve officer and as a full-time officer in 1992. His first experience encompasses an array of assignments, including motor officer, field training officer, internal affairs sergeant, public information officer, patrol officer water commander, and detective bureau's commander. He was promoted to captain in 2010 and has overseen the administration and operations divisions and the city's information technology services bureau. And whereas, Chief Ishi has helped transform the department into a community policing-driven culture. He has led teams that implemented nationally-recognized social media programs, innovative community policing programs, and created the Hawthorne Safe Initiative, where the police department focused on long-term strategies to provide safety and engagement to five key areas: parks, schools, traffic, neighborhoods, and businesses. In 2011, Chief Ishi was part of the Hawthorne Police Department team that helped create the National Coffee with a Cop program, which has become one of the most successful community policing programs, with events held in all 50 states, 16 countries, and in four languages. He also developed the National Coffee with a Cop website and currently oversees the National Coffee with a Cop Day, held annually, branding, marketing, and what it takes to be a global brand manager for the Coffee with a Cop nonprofit corporation. And therefore, the Hawthorne City Council does formally recognize and take great pride in acknowledging Chief Michael Ishi for his commitment to making a difference in the city and nationally, way above his sworn duties and commitments to the city of Hawthorne. We take great pride in honoring and thanking you for your contributions and wish you all the best in your retirement, proclaimed this 13th day of December 2022, signed by all of us, Mayor Alex Vargas, Mayor Pro Tem David Patterson, Councilmember Alex Montero, Councilmember Angie Reyes English, and myself, Councilmember Olivia Valentine. Thank you, Chief Ishi.
It's an honor. Thank you very much.
All right, and three, two, one, and three, two, one. Thank you. If you don't mind, I do, I've never seen this many people in my 32 years here in the police department. I just want to say a couple, you know, things. I just, it's as you are reading my bio, it's interesting to have 32 years of service go by in a few seconds, in a few paragraphs. It's a lifetime of work. I started here as a, as somebody with zero police experience, just figuring out what to do. I was initially going to go into international business. I speak Japanese and I grew up in a different country. And here I am 32 years later as a police chief, leading a fine group of men and women serving our community. Normally, I would just tell you about things and thanking everybody, but I figured this would be my last time. I just wanted to share with you and the police department a quick story that has shaped myself of being the chief for the last four years and really focusing on our culture. And that's pretty much all I've done and to develop a really compassionate and a community policing-driven culture. And it really started a long before that. But one of my personal defining moments, and I share this with the police department, is during the protests after George Floyd's murder. You know, I was driving to work one day. I was in uniform and a call had gone out to a local 7-Eleven. It was a dispute between a customer and the store owner. And I figured, you know, maybe I should stop by and, you know, assist because I was in uniform. Well, I stopped by and I quickly realized it was a bad idea. And everything was heated. And if you put yourself back to those times, it was a very tense, very emotional situation. And quickly, when our officers arrived right after me, it was going to escalate to maybe some sort of significant force. I mean, people were really yelling and screaming. And here I am thinking I made the biggest mistake here. You know, I'm going to be on TV, the police chief here rolling around trying to arrest somebody or, you know, doing whatever. And it's just off, you know, things. And as the moment was at its peak, a person tapped my shoulder as we were standing there. And it was an African-American gentleman about my age. And he tapped me on the shoulder. He goes, hey, you don't remember me, but I remember you. And that's always a bad sign for policing. And I go, well, you know, how do you know me? And he goes, well, back in the late 90s, you had arrested me. And that's not, not a good sign altogether. So this was going, I was really nervous. And then I go, well, you know, tell me what happened. And then he proceeded to share this story with me. And he said that I had, I was a young officer. I'd responded to domestic violence. He was there. And I ended up arresting him. And before that, he told me that, you know, he knew he was going to go away for a while. And he said, hey, before I go, before you take me, can I spend a few minutes with my kids before I go? And he was in the backseat of the police car. And he said, of course. So I rolled down the window. This is him telling me this. I don't remember. And I proceeded to let him spend some time with his kids. And that was the end of it. We did, you know, we went our separate ways. And here we are 30 odd years later. And as we were having this conversation, people started to look at the police chief talking with this African-American gentleman there in Hawthorne. And we were having a nice conversation. And, you know, I said to him, hey, it looks like we both survived here. We are still in Hawthorne, you know, being, you know, we survived this and I appreciate it. And I congratulate him. Hey, we're still here. And it looks like you're doing well. Shook hands, actually hugged each other. And while this happened, everybody started watching the police chief here talking with this gentleman and diffuse the whole situation, something that could have gone completely sideways for something that I did as a young officer, didn't even know it, had come back to help me, help the organization, help our community heal and move forward. And I tell the story because it's these small little moments that matter. And you never know how you're going to affect somebody's life down the road. In this case, it just happened to be at one of the most tense moments in our career and our time. And I share this with you because that's the police organization that I strive to build in our culture, that every small moment counts, that we are constantly working on community policing, not just programs, but actual compassionate, professional contacts, every one, every one moment. And we never know how we're going to make a difference in somebody's life. And we never should take that for granted. Our position allows us to make a difference in people's lives. And it's a privilege and we should never take that for granted. I share that with you because that's the tone that I've strived to set for our police organization. I hope that it shows. I hope that it showed in the leadership. I hope that it showed in our officers out there. And I hope that it showed in, in the way that you have come in contact with our organization. And I'm hoping that as the interim chief is here, Gary Tomatani, who will be taking my spot after tonight, that that will carry on for our organization. And so with that, I want to say thank you to our council members, to city manager who believed in me and allowing me to lead such a fine organization, for Senator Bradford, who's here to, you know, to support our community efforts. And for everybody that's here, I want to say thank you, especially for our officers watching. I couldn't, we couldn't have done this without you. And I look forward to a continued growth and of our organization with that culture set in mind. On behalf of the Hawthorne Police Department, I want to say thank you and I wish everybody nothing but the best. Good night. Thanks.
And Chief, on behalf of the state of California, we also want to say thank you. We have a small token of recognition also from the 35th Senate District for the tremendous work that you have done to help forge good community relations. Many times you hear this, us against them when it comes about law enforcement, but really you're an integral part of the community. We appreciate the leadership that you have provided to Hawthorne and the South Bay as a whole. So on behalf of the 35th Senate District, we say thank you.
To the chair. Chief Ishi, thank you greatly for all your work, your commitment to the city of Hawthorne and the work that you've not only demonstrated in your speech today, but true facts. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you taking my calls when constituents have called me to inquire on their loved ones that are jailed in our jails. And you provided me professional information and leadership in assuring those families that their loved ones are safe. And I appreciate that greatly. I look forward to having that same relationship with our new incoming chief. Hello. And I can't say enough, you are truly a chief and a gentleman, and you will be missed. Thank you greatly.
It's an honor. Thank you very much.
Through the chair. I'll be quick because we already said our goodbye last meeting. But I told you, it's not a goodbye because I know you were young, very young. It's inconceivable to see you going so fast. But, but I know, you know, you have done outstanding, like I told you before. Even a lot of people don't know, but I have called you for my confidence, right, to tell me, give me advice in some, in some issues. So again, I have to say thank you. Thank you. You have demonstrated a tremendous character in this community and that, you know, you passed the baton. And I think we're going to be in the good hands. And but you could be our consultant, okay? So don't go away so fast. But enjoy your time off.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Really, I want to say some words about the chief to the audience and let you guys know who this guy is, right? One thing I always say about Chief Ishi, he's a really good dude. I've spent a lot of time in Hawthorne as a kid, as a youth. I didn't live in Hawthorne when I was a kid. I lived in Compton, but my best friend cousin lived in Hawthorne, right on 129th and Jefferson. And I used to be in Hawthorne all the time when I was 15, 16 years old, and had a lot of interesting run-ins with the Hawthorne Police Department at that time. You know, I've been searched on a hundred and many times for, you know, fitting a description wearing some dockers, right? And, and I remember sharing some of my frustrations that I had with, with how the police department conducted itself when I was young, sharing those frustrations with the chief. And one thing, I have so much respect for Chief Ishi because he just sat and listened, right, and let me passionately share those things that were on my heart and on my mind and got kind of emotional about it. And he just sat and listened and gave me a lot of respect in that respect. And over the time that he's been chief, I've seen how, well, it didn't start under his leadership, but, you know, he helped to show me how the culture of our police department has changed a lot over the years, over the decades. And, you know, he, you know, he talked about how things were very different when he first started and how things are today. And I, there's been a few different incidents where people weren't happy with how things were conducted. And the chief never backed down in kind of listening to criticism or people not being happy, right? He's always there and he listens and gives respect. And, and as I got to know him and some of the things that he's implemented, you see that, you know, he really cares about the community, really cares about there being a lot of mutual respect. And, you know, he's, you know, two, two things that has come up in our conversations is one has been transforming the culture inside the police department, which I think he's done a spectacular job doing so. And another thing, one of our last conversations was about succession planning. And in that conversation, you know, I got a lot more insight into just how brilliant this gentleman is. And Chief Ishi really appreciate your contribution to our community. You know, it's because of you that I've gotten involved with the police department over the last couple of years and trying to support recruitment to the police department, trying to bring some black officers to our police department. And that was something that was always important to me. And you recognize that and, and, you know, encouraged my involvement in that respect. know, encouraged my involvement in that respect. And, you know, I never would have thought I would have had this type of relationship that I have with a police department and individual police officers that I do now. And that's in large part due to you and the work you've done in our city, and how you've transformed things in our city. And I really would love that, you know, what you've done for, what's happened in our police department under your leadership, you know, happens in every other police department in our nation. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Chief, I want to thank you too for everything you've done for the city. You know, thank you for taking my calls at wee hours of the morning and at late at night. So, you know, I really appreciate that, responding to the things as I see them, having people respond to things, trying to make sure Hawthorne's a beautiful place and is kept a beautiful place. So all my colleagues have took the words out of my mouth. I mean, you're just a stand-up guy, really easy to get along with. You're followed by, the morale has increased even further within the police department because of your leadership and everybody's confidence and trust in you. So for that, I commend you, and the city of Hawthorne commends you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is not on the script, but I'm gonna ask our new county supervisor, Lindsay Horvath, to come up to the podium. And you're gonna be hearing a lot about her in the news, and you guys have already heard she's the youngest. Board member, you know, she was from West Hollywood, she was a council member and mayor, and that's how I met you. I met you over there in Washington, DC, at one of the, at the US Conference of Mayors. And hey, she's not our direct supervisor, but guess what? She's part of the board of five that will impact our city and what they do for us. So we want to congratulate you. Let's give her a round of applause. So it is very pertinent to what we have going on here. So I want to give you the floor to give us a couple of words and tell us what you plan to do for the county, anything, any small level.
Wow, okay. Well, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here tonight. I have the privilege tonight of swearing in your new council colleague, whom I have known for many years, and I look forward to being able to administer the oath of office to Katrina for her ability to step into a role of service. I am greatly honored to have the opportunity to serve as the newest elected county supervisor, and I also bring greetings from Supervisor Mitchell, who I worked with earlier today, and I told her I was gonna be here tonight. And I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to be here. Hawthorne's community is rich and vibrant, and I have enjoyed serving alongside the members of the council on our Clean Power Alliance and working together in local government, making sure that we protect local control. And how we protect our communities and our neighborhoods is incredibly important, and that's something I will take with me to the work that I will do on the county board of supervisors. For those who followed our election, we talked a lot about the homelessness and housing crises that we're facing, the safety issues that we're witnessing in our community, and how we keep people safe, and how we protect our environment and implement the county's sustainability plan, but really get everyone involved in how we protect our communities. And so there's a lot of work to be done. I'm already rolling up my sleeves and getting to work, but it is, while I do not directly represent your district, I am grateful to have so many partners to be able to work with in realizing the goals that we all share, to protect our neighborhoods and communities, to make sure that the services and support of our county reach all of the people who need our help the most. And I hope that you will call on me to work in collaboration with you in those efforts. I know that you all are committed to uplifting those who are most in need, and I'm excited to do that work alongside you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations. Didn't mean to do that to you, but, you know, we just had to. All right. Oral communications? Go ahead.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay. I have some speakers here. Start off with the first one. Blanca Jimenez, is she here? Blanca, representative from, Representative Congresswoman Maxine Waters, go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Maxine Waters. Of course, I'm her district director. And I have also joining me here is one of the Congresswoman's new field representative, Ari Ruiz. So we're both here, obviously, to congratulate Alex Montero on his reelection to the city council, and to also congratulate Katrina Manning on her election to the city council. We are very happy that both of you will be serving on city council. I know I personally and the congresswoman have known both of you since you were leading community organizations, so we know how involved and how your heart is really for the community and the constituency, and you will be looking out for them. So obviously, she couldn't be here herself, because she's in Washington, DC, but she's asked us to be here, first of all, to just remind you that we continue to support and work for the city of Hawthorne. She was happy to be here not that long ago to make a presentation for the community funding projects for both the city of Hawthorne and South Bay Web and the Hawthorne VFW, and looks forward to presenting some new checks for the next time around, aside from the other big funding that comes from HUD and the other city departments. So we look forward to working with the city council, and we also congratulate the new county supervisor, Horvath, congratulations as well. And we appreciate this opportunity to be here and celebrate with you all, and we thank the public servants that are retiring tonight, and also congratulate Chief Ishii. That was a great speech, and I hope that's a legacy that is left with the Hawthorne PD, because that's probably one of the most moving speeches I've heard from a chief of police probably ever. So I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak, and also thank all the members of the community, other elected officials, and other stakeholders that are out here this cold evening. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ari, and thanks, Blanca. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber. I just want to remind everybody that December 20th is our Christmas mixer at the chamber, and we would like everyone to bring a gift that's at least $10 or above, and that's gonna be from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. There'll be a ton of food, all different kinds of food this time, drinks, not alcohol, and music, and door prizes. All the door prizes are money prizes. So hopefully, you can all attend. And then December 23rd, we'll be giving out our toys. We're gonna give out turkeys and also bags of groceries, and we did the same thing for Thanksgiving. So we hope that if you know families that need toys and food, we hope that you will have them come, and that's gonna start at 1:00 PM. I want to congratulate Katrina. I want to congratulate Alex Montero and Olivia for your service, and for Chief Ishii. He's been fantastic, and I thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I live on Cranbrook Avenue, and we have a school, and I come before you to request B-bombs, because these people like to fly down our street.
Okay, so you want to give us, what streets is it on?
It's Cranbrook Avenue in Hawthorne.
Cranbrook, in between where and where?
Between Marine and UConn Block West, the elementary school.
Thank you, sir.
Staff will study this matter.
If you, does he need to contact information? If you could come to this side over here, and the city manager will take further notes. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Gordon Michael Migo.
Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the 8th, 1952. The shiny city on the hill. Hawthorne is working on that to definitely become that in the South Bay area of LA County. Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza, the renamed mall in the downtown area can be revitalized architecturally into a dynamic and vibrant destination point for people in the city, the region, and beyond to shop, dine, relax, entertain, and more. Revamped layout would combine the best elements of an enclosed, including skylights and open-air designs. Note, an enclosed mall does protect oneself from the adverse weather, you know, cold, heat, rain, wind, all that stuff. People desire a warm and inviting atmosphere and expect a safe and secure environment. Local, regional, state, and national events can occur throughout the year. SpaceX could have a welcoming center, and Tesla could have an auto dealership on site, utilizing technological advances for energy savings, including solar power. South Bay area of LA County is an economic powerhouse. We must capitalize on opportunities to increase the wealth of our city. Employment sector of the local economy can greatly benefit people in the various trades and the corporate world. Hawthorne would enhance revenues, and it could be in the millions, we're talking about sales tax and other, could approach maybe $10, $12 million a year. In order to improve the quality of life for people in Hawthorne, we must join together in this important endeavor. Let us make Hawthorne great again in the 21st century. Thank you. And Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas to you.
Honorable Mayor Vargas, members of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. My name is Rafi Rebukas. I currently serve as the elected president of the Board of Governors of the Students Political Action Committee in California, the Young Leaders PAC. And I foremost wanted to thank each and every one of you. I don't think the public, I don't think people at large really recognize the enormous sacrifice that it takes to sit on the dais and to serve the people and be responsive. And I want to thank you, Mayor, as well as the members of the city council for doing just that, for being responsive to the residents and the community members, community stakeholders here in the city of Hawthorne. I want to thank you, Councilmember Valentine, for your distinguished service to the city, in particular, on behalf of students, to the students and the youth of the city of Hawthorne, and your passions to uplift and promote their interests and their needs. And I congratulate and welcome our newly-elected member of the city council, Katrina Manning, as well as Councilmember Montero on your reelection, our outgoing and incoming city clerk and city treasurer. But, you know, when we talk about a responsive city government, when we talk about responsive local officials, it's important to note that civic engagement is a two-way street, right? And, you know, members of the city council, you know very well that you could host ten town halls and twice on Sundays, and it would never be enough unless members of our community actually come together and engage in civics, engage in democracy, and come together and voice their concerns civilly, and speak to their elected officials about the issues that matter most. Someone came to me, a young student who's a freshman in high school in a different city, and had a concern about their streets and the safety. And I said, "Why don't we have a conversation with your mayor and city council?" And she gasped, and she said, "We can do that?" And, you know, as heartwarming as it was in the moment, I recognize that it's concerning when students, when people, don't know that they can have a conversation with their elected officials, that their governments are not supposed to be a force in a distant capital. They're supposed to be leaders who are working for them. And so with that, I want to thank you once again for your service. I want to thank you for your public service, for your community service, and I wish you all the best of luck in continuing to be responsive, in particular, to the needs of Hawthorne students and the Hawthorne community at large. Thank you.
Anybody wishing to address the city council, form a line? Go ahead, ma'am. Anybody wishing to address the city council, form a line now? Dear, as to how many people are gonna speak? This is the only opportunity you'll be able to address the city council, so on any topic on the agenda. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, and my neighbors, who I've had the privilege to live here near 25 years with. I'm speaking tonight as Chair of the Hawthorne Veterans Affairs Commission. I know there's a lot of other activity going on tonight, but there's a meeting on Thursday that I want our community to know about, because there's been some important legislation passed that is going to change the lives for our veterans in this community and in any other community. So I wanted to let you know the information. Some of you may have heard the PACT Act passed a while back and was signed into law. The PACT Act takes effect on January 1st of this year. There are two major impacts that the PACT Act will have, and this will affect any military or veteran family. So what I want you to know is that there is a PACT Act Town Hall, which is being held at the West Los Angeles VA Medical Center this Thursday, December 15th. There will be a presentation from approximately 12:00 until 1:00 PM. It will be in the main hospital building, Building 500, in room 1281. The address is 11301 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles. You can attend that meeting in person, or you can attend it virtually. And because there's a lot of information, and I won't have time to go through it here, I have a copy of the flyer with me. There are a few of them that are out on the table out there. If it affects your family, please see me and take a photograph of this, or grab one of the few that's out on the table. The places that this is going to impact our veterans, and why I'm taking the time tonight on what should be an inauguration celebration, is because these changes are gonna be life-changing for many, many of us. Many of you know that the Caregiver Act was passed a long time ago, but it was only for post-9/11 veterans. Two years ago, that program was opened for applications to veterans who served from 1975 and back, so Vietnam, Korea, World War II, whatever. Those applications have been accepted for the past two years. As of October 1st this year, the people that fell in that donut hole, so between 1975 and 9/11, have also been able to apply. There are going to be some massive changes in that program as a result of the PACT Act, and that's part of what the presentation is going to be on on Thursday. So I'm begging you to please be there in person if you can, or watch online if you can't. But essentially, a lot of us who had been turned down, who are family caregivers, under the new recommendations and rulings that are gonna come in after January 1st, reevaluations will happen, and those of us who have been turned down will be able to be accepted into this program. It includes some incredible benefits, including respite care, there's a stipend, there's training, there's all kinds of things that are crucial to be able to keep our veterans in their homes for whatever time they need and not have to be institutionalized. The other major thing that it's gonna take, and I just need one more second, is there are changes that have just been made as of January 1st that will affect the life insurance policies that are available through the VA. Many of us were not able to get in on those veteran insurance policies, life insurance policies in the PACs. As of January 1st, there is a new procedure, and we will be able to get insurance. So if you have any of those concerns, please attend this Town Hall on Thursday. There will be service officers there to help you apply and to get whatever information you need to be able to take advantage of these services. Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody up there for your service, and the incoming people, congratulations.
All right. Let's make sure we keep the comments within the timeframe, please. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I stand before you as the President of the El Camino Board of Trustees. My name is Nilo Michelin, but seven years ago, I was up in the dais, and I supported Katrina Manning for city council, and we had a conversation right here, Katrina. I don't know if you remember, but right here, we had a conversation in this spot, and I guaranteed you that you'd be up in the dais, and you agreed with me. We just didn't know that it would take seven years. So congratulations on this magical moment. Alex Montero, you've done so much for the community, the turkey dinners, community dinners, the concerts, the preschool, and the community really appreciates all you did. Congratulations. On this 75th anniversary of El Camino's anniversary... On this 75th anniversary of El Camino's anniversary, and 100th anniversary of City of Hawthorne's birthday, we appreciate the 75-year partnership. Mayor Vargas, you teach for El Camino. Councilwoman Reyes, you're Education Deputy. And Councilwoman Patterson, you're known for your financial education, so we really appreciate your efforts. And Councilwoman Valentine, what can I say? We were elected in the same year in the City Council, do you remember? And thank you for all you've done, your heart in a certain right place, the community is going to miss you, and we know you're not really going to go anywhere. You're going to keep on being involved, and you're a class act, so thank you for all you've done. And I remember when I first started in the City of Hawthorne, Chief Ishii and Chief Tomitani were two young officers, so City of Hawthorne is in good hands, and we appreciate both of you showing up for the El Camino Explorer graduations and all of your back, backing during that, so. We look forward to working with the City Council, and we look forward to our partnership with the City of Hawthorne. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Just checking real quick, do we have our elect, our City Council and our city clerk and our city treasurer elects in the room? I got one, I have two. Our city treasurer elect, where is she? Raise your hand. Ah, hi, okay. Just want to make sure you guys are ready, that's all. All right, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Alarte, Chief of Communications and Public Affairs for Assessor Jeffrey Prang. He sends me here for greetings and thank you, Councilmember Valentine, for your service to the Council. And congratulations, Councilmember Montero, on your reelection. And he also sends me, and congratulations to you, Councilmember-elect Manning. He has certificates for you, but unfortunately, he's out of town, so I will have to mail them all to you or bring them back one day for all of your work. But thank you all for what you do for the City of Hawthorne and for the region, and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the City Council at this time? So we have one more person. Is there anyone else?
Hi.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Jimmy, I'm an Uber driver, and I just wanted to thank my good friend, Dana Williams-Hunter. She's your new city clerk, and I'm just happy for her. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed, ordered. So as has been customary, we're going to bring back the, we're going to bring up the, as we've done in the past, we're going to bring up the commission appointments. Is Lili Fernandez and Mr. Daniel Lucero, please come up to the podium? Daniel Lucero, Lili Fernandez, okay. I'm going to be doing these in order, sir, so she's, her item's going to come up, sir, first, okay? Okay, so let's go to the official words here. All right. Item 20, we have the appointment of Avellina Lili Fernandez to the Citizens Commission. Go ahead, any words?
Good afternoon, Lili Fernandez, City of Hawthorne resident here for years, and I finally made it to senior age. I've been helping advocating for seniors in where I used to work at, in Internal Medicine Doctor's Office, where I found that a lot of seniors needed a lot of help and assistance, and I guided them, and I seen how my help and my assistance did a difference, made a difference on them. So I started to attend the meetings here, and bumped into Ms. Juanita, and I seen what she was doing, and it's, I like what she was doing. They have a seat available, and she invited me to apply, and here I am. I like to continue making that difference for our elderly here in Hawthorne.
Yes, I met Evelyn, she attended a few of our meetings, and she was very vocal with things that she thought that we should be doing, and I said, maybe you should run. So she did, and I recommend her because I think that she will be very much involved with the seniors, and I think we like the diversity in our community. So I do recommend and support her for the position of Commissioner, Senior Commissioner, Senior Citizen Commissioner. Thank you.
I make a motion for Ms. Fernandez?
Good.
Let's move, move and second it. We have a motion and a second, so let's just vote. You can make comments after.
The vote reflects Councilmember Valentine and Mayor Vargas voting yes, and Councilmembers Patterson, Reyes, English, and Montero voting no.
Mr. Lucero?
Respected leaders, members of the community, thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Daniel Lucero. I'm a captain in the United States Army, over 10 years of experience. I'm a West Point graduate. I commanded the largest military police company in the Army, and through all my experience, I've learned that the most important thing to achieve the mission is teamwork. No one can do anything alone, but by coming together as a cohesive team, we can collectively move mountains. If I'm given this opportunity to serve our community on the Veterans Affairs Commission, I already have some partnerships with other organizations, and I'd like to continue to leverage those to help our veterans and help our community, specifically the South Bay WIB, the West Point Society of Los Angeles, and the scholarship funds through West Point and ROTC as well. Our community, like previous gentleman mentioned, is a city on the hill, and we owe our community members and our veterans that same respect and support. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I might go a lot more detail during my discussion item, though, but I think in general, I was moving forward on the City Council that we give our new council member opportunity to be involved in kind of setting the vision for our different commissions. And I would have honestly voted, knowing this last appointment, except for the fact that there's lack of a quorum. But, you know, I'll talk about a little bit more detail in my discussion item, but I'd like for us to kind of review our commissioners and our commission appointments before we kind of make any new additions.
Let's move to the next item.
Congratulations, Mr. Lucero.
Congratulations, Mr. Lucero.
Thank you.
You're going to be sworn in at a later time? All right. So let's see. Madam Clerk?
City Clerk's Consent Calendar. Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinance ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item eight, approval of the City Council minutes, City Council minutes for the special meeting of December 10th, 2019, and the regular meetings of February 8th, 2022, and October 25th, 2022. Item nine, the certification of the official results of the returns of the general municipal election held November 8th, 2022. Resolution number 8383, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, and declaring the results thereof and such other matters as are provided by law.
And through the chair, I'm going to request a poll number nine for now.
I make a motion, and I'm, item six through eight. Did you finish reading eight? I just didn't keep track. Did you finish reading the eight? Item eight?
Yes, she did.
She did.
I second.
Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
All right. Item nine, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked to pull number nine so the city clerk will have an opportunity to read a statement regarding the certification of the results of the general municipal election held on November 8th, 2022.
Pursuant to the provisions of the Elections Code of the State of California, the Register Recorder of the County of Los Angeles canvassed the returns of said general municipal election and has certified the results at Tatcher 2, and made a part hereof as Exhibit A, and I certify to you as follows, that there were 32 voting precincts established for the purpose of holding said election, consisting of consolidations of the regular election precincts in said city as established for the holding of state and county elections. That said, general municipal election was held for the purpose of electing the following officers of said city as required by the laws relating to the cities in the State of California to wait. For two members of the City Council for a full term of four years, for City Treasurer, a full term of four years, for City Clerk, a full term of four years, and for approval of one measure, that the whole number of votes cast in said city was 14,758, that the names of persons voted for at the said election and the total number of votes received by each person are as follows. For members of the City Council, Katrina Manning, 4,146, Alex Montero, 3,619, Donisha Sanford, 3,532, Hugo Roas, 2,543, Juan Antonio Tony Reynoso, 2,227, Amy Shepherd, 2,106, Mohamed Awadala, 1,867, Eddie Fune Ikemafuna, 1,717, for City Clerk, Dana S. Williams-Hunter, 7,697, John L. Jefferson, 4,316, for City Treasurer, Marie Poindexter Hornback, 5,977, Gregory Fallon, 5,865. Measure I, a ballot measure to adopt a charter for the City of Hawthorne, yes, 5,003, no, 7,675. I certify that Katrina Manning was elected as a member of the City Council for the city for the full term of four years. I certify that Alexander Alex Montero was elected as a member of the City Council for the city for the full term of four years. I certify that Dana S. Williams-Hunter was elected as a city clerk for the city for the full term of four years. I certify that Marie Poindexter Hornback was elected as the city treasurer for the city for the full term of four years. I certify that this general municipal election was held for the purpose of submitting to the voters an ordinance to adopt a city charter, also known as Measure I. I certify that the whole number of votes cast in the city was 14,758. I hereby certify that 5,003 ballots were cast in favor of Measure I, and 7,675 ballots were cast against Measure I. With your vote of approval of Resolution number 8383, the city clerk's statement and the certification of the canvas will be ready to be filed. Mr. Mayor, can I get a motion and a vote on Resolution number 8383?
I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
We have opening bids, let's kind of make it through these, please. Item 11? No, item 10? Go ahead.
Item 10, now is the time and place to declare publicly received seal bids for Highway Safety Improvement Project, traffic signal upgrade, and reconstruction of 120 Street Improvement Project. Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, City Project 21-06, Public Works Declaration Publication Filed. There were three bids received, all were accompanied by bidders' bonds. The prices are as follows. Select Electric, Inc., $5,025,650. Comet Electric, Inc., $4,904,275. Eleknor Belko Electric, Inc., $4,299, I'm sorry, $4,299,186.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Mayor Vargas, can you vote again? And? Okay, the vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Public hearings, first readings and adoptions, item 11? Go ahead.
Item 11, now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft substantial amendment to the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan, 2020 to 2021, and 2021 to 2022 Action Plans for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships Home Programs. Housing Department's Declaration Publication File, no written communications were received. Recommended motion, the staff advises at the City Council, conduct the public hearing and receive comments on the draft substantial amendments to the 2024 Consolidated Plan, 2021 and 2021, and 2122 Action Plan for the use of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Home Funds. Adopt the 20 to 24 Consolidated Plan, the 20 to 21, and the 21 to 22 Action Plans, and authorize the city manager or designate to submit that plan and any necessary amendments to the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Authorize the city manager or designate to negotiate, execute, and amend contracts with sub recipients or professional service providers as necessary to implement the CDBG and the home projects identified. Authorize the city manager or designate to execute, amend, and submit to HUD all plans and documents necessary to administer CDBG and home programs.
Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item? If there's not, the hearing is closed, ordered. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
All right. Did everybody get a chance to read the American Rescue Plan update? Did we have a report? Do we have a paper report?
At this time, we have a speaker that will speak shortly with a quick update on this matter.
Sir, you have five minutes for this report, please?
Thank you.
Abbreviated if you have to.
We will be very abbreviated. I realize that you have a lot on your agenda tonight. My name is Ken Duran, I'm with a company called HDL Companies. We are a consultant that the city has hired to help you administer your American Rescue Plan Act funds, and for those in the audience, those are funds that are distributed from the federal government to assist communities with recovery from impact from COVID. There were a number of business assistance plans that the city had adopted last year, and one of the programs that we've been working with the city on for the last several months is a community gift card program. And that program would be a shop local program, which would allow residents in your community to purchase gift cards and receive free gift cards from the city using these American Rescue Act funds to be used at local businesses. What we've been doing over the last several months is trying to recruit businesses in Hawthorne to be participants in the program, that they would be recipients of these gift cards. We've had a couple of updates to the council over the last couple of months, indicating that it's been a little bit difficult for us to be able to get businesses in the community to sign up for the program. In October, we provided you with an update. At that point, there were five businesses that had signed up for the program. We encourage council members to contact local businesses that you're familiar with to try and get them to sign up for the program. And I want to thank, in particular, Councilmember Valentine. I think we've picked up about three additional businesses who have signed up for the program, but we're still a little bit shy of the number that we feel we need to be able to launch the program in the community. So one of the things that we did was we reached out to the South Bay Workforce Board, and they have submitted a proposal to you to assist the city in marketing the program to the business community because they have a lot of business contacts. So staff and HDL Companies, as your consultant, are recommending that you approve a contract with the South Bay Workforce Board that's in your packet tonight to assist in the marketing of the program so that we can get some additional businesses signed up for the program, and then we're able to launch it, hopefully, after the first of the year, to sell gift cards to your community. So that's my presentation this evening. If you have any questions, be happy to answer that.
Through the chair? I do have a question about the timing. So you're saying you're going to launch it after the first of the year. What is your, what is your endpoint? When are you going to? It will be administered from what point to what point? What period to what period?
Actually, it's an open-ended program, so we'll be launching it once we have enough business. We would like to have about 15 businesses signed up to be participants of the program, excuse me, and then once we launch it, you have allocated $25,000 in matching funds for the program. So once those funds are expended, the city will have a decision if you want to add more funds to the program, or it's a community program, a gift card program that will continue as long as you want this. program, a gift card program, that will continue as long as you want this program in place. It may not have matching funds, but it's the whole impetus of the program is to get your community members to shop local. So it's going to be a program that can be in perpetuity as long as the city wants it to be in place.
You're going to implement it as soon as you have fifteen businesses?
As soon as we have about fifteen businesses signed up, that'll be the number that will be attractive enough for people to buy gift cards. So, if you approve of the agreement with the Workforce Board tonight, hopefully, their efforts will be able to push that number up to that point where you'll have at least fifteen or more businesses signed up. And because of the holidays, probably, they won't be able to do their efforts, probably, until after the first of the year. So we're anticipating that this will probably be launched sometime in January.
I think that's an excellent strategy. I think they really have the staff and know-how to have a really good marketing program. I think that's a good idea.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The South Bay Web is going to cost us how much?
The proposal that they have submitted is ten thousand dollars.
So ten thousand for their marketing efforts?
Right, to market the program to the business community.
Okay. And then, myself, along with the council colleagues and the city, could make efforts as well using Channel Twenty-Two, our local cable station. The audience here today, we need fifteen businesses in Hawthorne. If you're a business, please call Vaughn, our city manager. It says that we have a shop local program, twenty-five thousand; business retail assistance grant for a hundred and fifty thousand; business assistance grants for fifty thousand; marketing assistance program at two hundred thousand; storefront opening and boarding up removal up to a hundred thousand. There's a lot of money here, folks, and we need to use it. How soon do we need to have that used by?
By, the funds need to be committed by the end of twenty-twenty-three and spent by the end of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
So, and there's actually another round of funding that the city received a couple of months ago, that I'm sure that your staff is going to be coming back with recommendations on how to use those funds. So, yeah, there's a lot of money out there for business assistance. We're just trying to get the business community engaged in, you know, wanting us to, wanting you, the city, to give them money. So.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I make a motion to accept the presentation?
Mr. Mayor, can I interject really quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Duran, if you can explain slowly how the program actually operates for the individuals that are here this evening, the matching funds that we plan to intend to use for this program?
Yes. So the way the program is structured, it's a shop local program. So, it's a gift card, electronic gift card program, where residents of your community can purchase gift cards in denominations of twenty-five-dollar increments up to a hundred dollars, so twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, or a hundred dollars. And when they purchase that gift card, that can only be used for the businesses that have signed up for the program. So, again, it's trying to encourage businesses to shop locally. The city is using their ARPA funds, these federal funds, to provide a matching gift card. So if somebody buys a twenty-five-dollar gift card, they will receive an additional free twenty-five-dollar gift card. If they buy a fifty-dollar gift card, they'll receive a free fifty-dollar gift card. Same thing, a hundred-dollar gift card, a free hundred-dollar gift card. And, but again, those can only be used for the businesses that sign up and want to be recipient of those gift cards in the community. There is no cost for the business to be a participant. It's a MasterCard program, so any business that uses MasterCard, all they do is use these gift cards as if they were getting a MasterCard purchase at their store or their business. So, it's a real win-win for the businesses. It's a win-win for the residents for purchasing these cards. We just really want to make sure that there's enough businesses in the program, that if someone's going to buy a gift card, that there's enough of a variety of businesses that they want to use those cards for. Is that answered?
Please, motion made, seconded by Councilwoman Valentine. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Be the City Manager's Consent Calendar, please.
City Manager's Consent Calendar, item thirteen, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and CNS Engineering for providing consulting engineering services at the Hawthorne Municipal Airport. Item fourteen, progress payment number six and find acceptance in the amount of seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents due to Sequel Contractors, Inc. of Santa Fe Springs, California, for local street improvement project twenty-twenty-two, Project Twenty-Two-Dash-Oh-Four. Item fifteen, approval of purchase of a fire alarm system panel. Item sixteen, approval of purchase of water pump and the control panel. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar. We have a motion to approve items thirteen through sixteen.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes.
So this is the part a lot of you, the great majority, everyone here, has also been waiting for. So, we're going to have the administration of the oath of office for the newly-elected officials. And, I got it, don't worry. Certificates of election for new elected officials. So, Madam Clerk, can you just read item seventeen, the first part?
Item seventeen, administration of oath of office to newly-elected officials and presentation of certificates of election for new elected officials.
Okay, I'll move on with the rest of it. So, can everyone be ready with their group that might be accompanying them up here? We're going to start off with Councilmember Alex Montero, Alex Montero for right now, and re-elected Councilwoman Montero once this is finished. Senator Steve Bradford, can you please come up?
Yeah, take, Mr. May I? I believe Steve Bradford have left, right? Because he had a plane to catch. But do I see Tina McCartney over there, Assemblywoman? No? That's not her, standing right there? It looks like her, doesn't she?
Yeah, it did.
What do you like to do?
What about Nilo Michelin? Is Nilo still here?
Nilo's never, he's gone.
Oh, he's gone?
I'll give you your oath.
All right. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Angie English to give me the oath.
Yay!
So, I'm going to call Councilwoman Angie Reyes English to please join Councilmember Alex Montero for his oath for his reelection.
Well, we apologize for this long meeting because this is the last meeting we're going to have for the year twenty-twenty-two, because Christmas time, we don't have no meetings. So that's why we have to do all this business before we swear. So, we apologize for the long waiting.
First of all, it's truly my honor to swear you in. It really is.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We've been longtime pals for years.
Yes.
Years. If you could please repeat after me, and after I say "I," please say your name.
Alexander Montero.
Hold on. I know we're excited, but let me just...
I'm going to speed it up, right?
Okay, okay, here we go. I...
I, Alexander Montero.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution...
That I support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or the purpose of evasion.
And that I will well...
And that I will well.
And faithfully...
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon I'm about to enter.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Just a moment, guys. Councilwoman Montero, your certificate of election, so you can take, do you have a copy of it? This is another official.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have one, another one.
Okay.
Ooh, I have two. All right, all right, all right. Go, this way. Okay, so look at that, that way. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to the next one, we'd just like to give one final thank you to our councilmember colleague, Olivia Valentine, who will be vacating her seat for the newly-elected councilwoman. So, thank you so much. We love you, we appreciate you. So I'm going to ask Katrina Manning to please come up with her daughter and her husband. Is he here? Is Ron going to be coming up? Ron, her daughter? And Supervisor Lindsay Horvath, of course. Anybody else joining you, Katrina? This it? Okay. Oh, yes, a lot of people are in the audience, but... Yeah, no, absolutely, Mom, come on up. No, she needs to be up here, absolutely.
There you go, like this. We got to see the whole family. Got to get the shot right. Wait, wait, wait. Okay. This is beautiful, your whole family is here. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes!
It's my honor to administer this oath. If you repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Katrina Manning...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend...
I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter. Upon which...
Upon which I am about to enter.
You got it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Manning.
This way, this way, good. One more time right here. One, two, three, good, good. Make sure you take, make a right turn over there, a right turn onto the dais. So here's your official certificate on behalf of the City Clerk for your election. All right. We need to populate the dais, so let's move on to our next individual here, Marie Poindexter Hornback. Where is she? Quincy Hornback, are you here? Okay, Quincy Hornback will administer the oath of office for our new City Treasurer, Marie Poindexter Hornback, as prescribed in the Constitution of the State of California.
Check one, two. And that's Quincy Poindexter, by the way, not Quincy Hornback.
Okay, yeah, they listed it as properly.
Okay. This is a proud moment for me to be able to do this. The execution of this oath is required by Article Twenty, Section Three of the Constitution of the State of California. I...
I, Marie Poindexter Hornback...
Do solemnly confirm that I will support...
I do solemnly confirm that I will support...
And defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution...
To the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
Of the State of California...
And the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well...
And that I will well...
And faithfully discharge...
And faithfully discharge...
The duties upon...
The duties upon...
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Subscribed and sworn before me this day, December thirteenth.
All right, please take your seat. I have your certificate of election right here. And we're going to ask Ebony Uert...
Uert?
Uert, to administer the oath of office for the new City Clerk Dana Williams Hunter, as prescribed in the Constitution of the State of California.
Your baby, get your baby.
All right. Let's position ourselves so that the cameraman and every, the audience can see you guys.
It's okay, I know. I know.
Do we want to give him the certificate so he can have it right there? Occupied right there with that? There we go.
There we go.
He has a little task to do.
Here's, yeah, let's all stand behind, uh... Everyone can step behind your mom, your Dana, everybody behind, yeah.
There we go, that's a...
Perfect.
Do you have everybody, Eric?
Yeah. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, daughter.
I, Dana S. Williams Hunter...
I, Dana S. Williams Hunter...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution... And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon, upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Grandbaby has the certificate of election on behalf of the city clerk. So. You got that? Miss City Clerk, you got that? You got the, yeah, there you go, that's the official stuff. We're gonna recess for five minutes. We're about to recess for five minutes, it said 10 minutes in the script, but we're gonna take 10, five minutes. Miss City Clerk, just take your seat, so you guys could see your new city council dais, you're a member of the city council, right here. And other members of the city, guys. Okay? So, we have a five-minute recess, we're in recess for five minutes, okay? Our newly-elected, please stay in the vicinity, so we can get started in five minutes, all right? And you guys will get a chance to say a few words. Okay?
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Also, meeting is back in session at 8:17 PM. So we have our new group up here. It's gonna work out really awesome. Awesome vibes that are being generated here. So we'll start off with some comments from my council colleagues. Let's start off with Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to say thank you, special welcome to my colleagues. Ms. Marie Pointer, Dexter, something. Your name is complicated, but we'll learn down the road. And Dinah, welcome.
Thank you.
And my friend from long time, like I said, you know, we have gone to conventions together in the past. You know, you have come to my house and eat some of my Portuguese food. So welcome to Katrina Manny, right? And I want to acknowledge my sister, my older sister, Manuela Gomez, right here in the front. And my brother-in-law, Tim, thank you for coming. So I want to say thank you to the people of Hawthorne that vote on me for another four years and to put the trust on my leadership. I have to say, you know, this election, it was not an easy election. I did everything by the book. And if you see, we had eight candidates, you know, that was running for two seats. And the vote was split completely because I was, I tell you, I have very surprised that I only won this election by 57 vote margin, okay? So do not take election for granted, but I am honored to be here because, like I said, even if I was elected or not elected, I was continue to do people's work because I'm a servant of this community. I've been here for 25 years doing things for the people of Hawthorne because those are the important people, for children, for families, especially for low-income families. So even despite of all the tricks out there, you know, people stealing signs, I lost 10 banners, you know, slamming, you know, telling lies. So unfortunately, we had a city of Hawthorne is a city of good neighbor. And that is what we want to show for these four year coming up, that we have to work together as a team and do things for the people of Hawthorne, not for us, not for ourselves. We have to make sure that we listen to the people and we do things that affect their daily lives. And that is what I promise to you. And I promise that I'm going to continue to fight for you, the people of Hawthorne, and show you that election doesn't matter, action matters. So my heart is in this city. Like I said, you know, I bought my home 20 years ago. I've been doing things for the city to benefit the people of Hawthorne, and I'll continue to do that, even from the preschool level to all the way to seniors. My heart is with you, my pledge is with you, and again, I pledge to serve you. So thank you and good night and Merry Christmas.
Through the chair. We still have a couple of agenda items left. It's, okay, okay, fine.
I've been doing this a long time. Come on, I just get you. Because we know people have to leave soon, so.
Okay, that's fine.
We want to hold them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Katrina Manny?
Can you say that again, Mayor?
Councilwoman Katrina Manny, you have the floor.
Wow, I'm so overwhelmed. This is so surreal. I'm just, I'm just speechless. I am so happy to all of you for supporting me, for voting for me. Thank you so much. You have no idea how much this mean that you've given me the opportunity to serve you. I'm so excited because we have an opportunity to work together and make this place do historical things. I am so, so grateful to God for blessing me and giving me this opportunity. I get to show my daughter what it's like to be resilient, to not give up on what you believe in. And that's what we got to tell our kids. We have to invest in our kids and let them know that if you want to do it, you can do it. You have to believe in yourself. It's so important. And I stay consistent. I've been trying to get on this side of the table for 10 years. 10 years, and I finally made it. But during that whole time, I never gave up. I never gave up on my community. I still continue to support my community. I love the city of Hawthorne. I love our residents. I love you for supporting and believing in me and giving me the opportunity to serve you. I look forward to being there for you. I'm only one person, so I can't be everywhere, but I'm gonna do my best to be there and support you, to be fair and to be just. I am so happy to be sitting up here with people that I've known for years, that I've worked with for years, and that I intend to learn from. I don't have all the answers, but with the experience of my colleagues, I'll grow into something incredible. And a support from the community. Please make sure that you reach out to me because I intend to participate. I'm gonna be that person that you can definitely count on. I am very hands-on, so I will definitely be there at your events as much as I can. I do work a full-time job, so just know that if I can't be at all of your events, I'll try to get to what I can. But I love you, city of Hawthorne, for voting for me and supporting me. My family appreciate you. I'm just so overjoyed. You guys have no idea how happy I am. 10 years, it's a long time. Thank you so much. I look forward and investing in our seniors. I love senior citizens. They are so wise and they give you so much information. Also, our homeless. That's one of the reasons that Lindsay is a part of my life because of the work that she has done in regards to the homeless community. I want to be that voice to make sure that we're doing what we need to do for our homeless residents in the city of Hawthorne. Also, business. I want to change our reputation. I want people to think of Hawthorne as a place that they're excited to come. We're right next door to the city of Inglewood. We are in a unique position to do great things. We have to seize the opportunity, and it is now. They have so many things coming, and we have a lot of foot traffic that we don't have to market for. That's coming through our city, and we're gonna have an opportunity to take advantage of that revenue. So I'm excited about things, building things. And as you all know, I'm also a real estate agent. So I believe in building, and I'm excited about new things. I'm excited about a lot of things, but I'm excited to be here. So the other thing that I wanted to mention is January 9th, I'm holding an appreciation lunch for all of our city employees. City manager, if you could please share this information with the city employees. I want them to know that I appreciate the work that they've been doing, and I want to uplift them and elevate them. And this is my opportunity to introduce them, introduce myself to them. So if you could please, January 9th, I will make sure that I give you the flyer to make that happen.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer Marie Poindexter Hornbach?
Thank you. I just want to say to the community in Hawthorne, thank you so much for your vote. I really appreciate it. I want to say I look forward to working with everyone on city council and the mayor. I'm honored to be here. It has been such a long ride with the new city clerk, Dana, over here. We did a lot of campaigning and canvassing the city together. So I look forward to continuing to doing everything that I've always done for the city of Hawthorne. But I look forward to doing so much more, and I really appreciate your time, your vote. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for my family for coming out. And I just really look forward to doing more than what I can. And I'm just so grateful to be here, and I thank you again. So I wish you all a happy holiday season. Bless you all. And thank you, thank you for your vote.
The city clerk, Dana Williams Hunter?
Hello, everyone. I want to thank everyone that voted. I want to thank everyone who voted for me. I really do appreciate being here. And I was here two years ago, as a matter of fact, when Mr. Patterson, Mayor Pro Tem, L. David Patterson, was sworn in. And if you had told me two years I'd be here, two years later I'd be here, I would have been shocked. It wasn't something that I really thought about per se. But then last year, you know, I became more interested in really taking a leadership position with the city and really doing things to really help the community around me and the people around me. I want to thank everyone here. I thank my family. I thank everyone here that I'm sitting with. I really am looking forward to learning from everyone here. Katrina, Maria and I, we really stomped the streets together, and we got to know a lot of people in the community and learned a lot about the needs of people here. True to my campaign promise, I want to make sure everybody's voice is heard and respected. And that's all I have to say. I just, I'm grateful to be here. I'm excited, and thank everyone.
Good comment?
To the chair, I forgot to mention that January 13th is gonna be my birthday. But we're gonna have a party to celebrate my reelection and my birthday on January 13th at 6:00 PM at the Hawthorne Muselage. You're all invited. And I'll be cooking. So some of you, I'm a very good cook. So I'll be cooking, you know, prime ribs and salmon. So you're all invited, from the staff, from the community, from my supporters, from my contributor, all of you, okay? So we're gonna have a big party on January 13th starting at 6:00 PM. So thank you.
All right, so here it goes. I didn't want to say this, but I have an announcement. No, just kidding. No, just, I hope I'm invited, geez. All right, yeah, let's, okay, so let's, let's get to work. Councilwoman English, you have an item. We're gonna go to yours first. Formation of a Business Collaborative Committee Discussion. So we have a new council member colleague. So let's get to work.
Okay, let's see.
Briefly. Ma'am, hold on just a moment. Do you have your copy of your?
I do.
So just page nine, I think it is.
Okay, so we're moving to number 19, right?
Yours.
Item number 19. Okay, city manager, city attorney, please take note. I would like to make a formation of Business Collaborative Committee with assignments. The objective is to engage the city of Hawthorne businesses to provide support, outreach, engagement, speaker series, businesses' grand openings, city business assistant, job fairs, referrals, and those alike. I'd like it supported by a city department. I would like to instruct you both to please manage the formation and to please make any analysis of surrounding cities with similar business support systems and strategic alliances in their municipalities. And to bring it back, bring the item back for introduction. There's been throughout the years a cry, if you will, from the business community in the city of Hawthorne that we need to do more to support our businesses, not just, say, for instance, today, going out and trying to get applications from businesses to apply for grants that are available. We need to be more engaged, more of a sense of a chamber. And I'd like to see that happen under a city authority. So having said that, that's my hope, and along with support from the council, I'd like to bring that back for introduction and any suggestions that may be provided. Yes.
Councilwoman, so this is essentially a chamber of commerce, pretty much.
Yes.
Yeah, no, well, I'm willing to support that since we haven't really had much of any activity as such with the current structure that we have out there that's floating around. So I think this is a great start of something that. And I also have been receiving telephone calls with regards to businesses who just have not had their needs met. I don't know, I mean, there's no need to say more, but they just haven't had their needs met. They just haven't seen activities that promote their businesses and how they can grow their businesses. Whatever's out there is just kind of just nothing. They just complaints and complaints. So I think this is good. I'll just leave it at that. So I want to support that.
Yeah, and I also want to include micro businesses. So again, this is just an effort from the city of Hawthorne to be more engaged with businesses and assisting them in their efforts, whether it be the Small Business Administration, whether it be conferences or speaker series that we're bringing in to assist those businesses. And I want to make this a monthly thing, if you will, so that businesses could occupy our memorial center and we could coordinate efforts to bring services, programs, and goods to the businesses. And I look forward to more discussion on that, but more importantly, implementing that department. Thank you.
Goodness, check. Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I agree with you. Some other city have so-called business ambassadors, you know, like welcome centers, ambassadors, so just to put that into motion into your proposal, okay? Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, looks like there's a general consensus. Item 18, Review and Evaluation. Commissioner Patterson, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Mayor. I put this on the agenda because, you know, we have a new council and a new year coming before us. And when it comes to our commissions, you know, I've found that we just kind of have like a policy of just adding people as vacancies show up. People kind of fall off or resign as they resign. And I don't know, I would like to be a little more proactive in how we kind of build our commissions. And so what I would like to propose is that we have an opportunity for everybody on the city council to weigh in on really what each commission's all about and what vision we might have for the commissions, as well as review the members of all the commissions, make sure that we have the right people really in the right places. I don't know if we have term limits at all, but something that, you know, I think maybe we can discuss as well. And, you know, just make sure that, you know, the commissions are doing what we need them to do. I know our Veterans Commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, it didn't have a quorum for quite some time. Is that correct? Like, there wasn't enough commissioners to even operate a meeting. So that's the only reason why I even voted yes on that particular appointment. So we didn't even have a meeting being operated. So I just want to make sure that we kind of, or I had an idea that we can, you know, have that kind of conversations at council and kind of set the kind of vision and kind of review the different commissioners. Maybe even invite them to all re-interview so we understand, you know, who's on our commissions and again, make sure we all agree the, you know, right people are in the right positions. So I'd love for everybody's comments or opinions about that.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Yeah, the other thing that I would suggest, because I think the commissioners, you know, they should rotate the chair every year, you know, like every December or January. They should rotate the chair because I think when, for example, the Veterans Commission, Kyle keeps saying that she is the chair of that committee for several, I don't know, for four years now. So I think they should rotate every year, should rotate the chair, like we, you know, we appoint persons to different committees. I think that the, I'm not saying we do it, but they do it among themselves. Like, it's commissioners, they should rotate the chair every year so give leadership to the individuals so they can know, you know, to do things correctly, not just one person's vision. I do agree, maybe we need just to look at the old resumes or all the applicants that did apply before because we never saw application of many of these commissioners, right? Because I've been here since 2018, and I haven't, you know, I know some commissioners by name, but I don't know them personally. I don't know, you know, their bio, for example, right? So maybe that's something we can revisit. Thank you.
Through the chair. I would be in support of vetting out all of our commission positions and having a new.
New application process?
Yes, new application process, new individuals, new opportunities for those that have not served, especially for those that are interested and have not had an opportunity. So I would be interested in all of that. And us, the council, selecting commissioners for said appointments and more importantly, having an opportunity to vet those applications, review the applications, look at the applications, maybe interview the applicant. We have to be fully engaged. It's, you know, I think it's important, and it's something that we haven't done in years. And I think we just have to start doing that just because of a lot of changes that have taken place with regards to term limits and things that we haven't really done much to press on those types of policies on commission positions. And so that's my stance.
You have a?
Through the chair. I think it's important that we vet our commissioners. We should collectively work as a body to elect them. But we all should know exactly what we're appointing in terms of commission. So I think we should be able to see their resume and do a background check, know who we're getting, and work together to decide who to appoint. So I have to support Patterson and Andrew Reyes English in what they just said. I support that as well. Thank you.
City manager, could you put something on the agenda that kind of addresses everything that's been discussed? You know, of course, look and see what we legally can do, you know, what's in our purview. Let us know what our options are and kind of maybe create an agenda item where we can, you know, maybe make some decisions on some of the things that we talked about, vote on some things.
Okay, if it's okay with the council, I can provide an update of what we have as far as commissioners, seats that are occupied, commissions that we have, overview of each commission for discussion, and we can take action after that if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Can you provide us with the legal confidential as well, with the legalities of that?
It, for my, just for clarity.
Legal confidential, please.
I will. For clarification, though, I think we're just discussing review and evaluation of commissioners, which is the topic. In terms of, I don't think we're going to, we discuss vetting, but I don't think we're going, moving into appointment of commissioners because there are specific laws on that. So just for clarification, I, from the directive that I'm hearing and the discussion I'm hearing, it's not the actual appointment of new commissioners, it's the vetting and review of the current commissioners.
Could you include in your legal confidential about appointment and dismissal?
Sure, I can do that. Sure, I can do that.
That's all for me. Elected officials' reports, go ahead. We'll start off with, uh, Councilwoman Manning, please.
I'm excited to be here. What can I say? Uh, I thank my family, uh, I thank pastor, he's bishop, I'm sorry, Bishop Richardson and his lovely wife for supporting me. Thank you so much. Um, this is my first time, y'all. I'm just so excited. I don't have much to say other than thank you so much to the voters. Um, I look forward to working with my colleagues. I look forward to learning and building and celebrating. I'm just excited to be here today, so please forgive me, I'm gonna be excited for a while. So, thank you so much. Thank you all for coming tonight, and those at home, thank you so much for joining tonight and supporting me and voting for me, so thank you.
Uh, Ms. City Treasurer? Final comments for the evening?
Um, I just want to thank everyone for coming out, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you. Ms. City Clerk?
I too want to thank Bishop Richardson for supporting me and guiding me and helping me throughout the way. I also want to give a special shout out to my mom, who could not be here today. My mom is, uh, has lung cancer and she's, uh, going through chemo, so she fought like crazy to get here, and we fought like crazy to get her here, but at the end of the day, she had to just watch us on FaceTime, but she's, uh, happy and proud, and I just want to give a shout out to my mom.
Oh, that's awesome. Uh, Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, I just want to say thank you to, uh, residents of Hawthorne and especially those who contribute to my campaign, thank you very much. But I want to say thank you to all the staff, uh, of the city of Hawthorne, because, you know, like I said, uh, the people that do the work every day, um, they are the pillar of our community. Without them, we over here, we're just, uh, a name, right? They're the ones who do the work, from the city manager to the city attorney to all the head departments, uh, uh, and all the people on the streets, you know, the orange jackets, the parking racks, all of them, thank you very much for all your, so finance, you know, housing. Uh, housing's been very busy, because if you look at, uh, they gave us this report that's like, uh, five hundred pages, right, for the, for the, uh, home and hut report, so thank you very much. And especially, you know, we did two grand, grand opens, and it was a groundbreaking and then a grand open, the tiny homes that we're gonna have for the homeless, the transition home, and then we opened the, uh, homeless resource centers right behind of the Hawthorne Memorial Center, so very good stuff happening in the city of Hawthorne. Um, and I know the staff has been working, you know, twenty-four-seven to make sure that this city is the shiny city of the hill. So thank you, staff, very, very much for your, for your work that you do every day. Um, and I, I did attend the grand open of a new, um, campus, it's not a campus, but a new building at the Hawthorne High, you know, you know how Hawthorne High Schools has been in construction for many, many years? So finally, they opened the, uh, they, they call it the, uh, West Campus, uh, that's a very beautiful building. Uh, and thank you, the voters of Hawthorne, because that is your tax dollar, uh, you know, those bonds that they pass, uh, to build, uh, those schools. So they did a fantastic job, so thank you to Sentinel Valley and to the Hawthorne High. Uh, just to let you know that the Hawthorne President's Council, uh, is gonna give toys away on Tuesday the twentieth at the Castle, right, at the fourteen zero two five Cordary. And remember, the Hawthorne President's Council is a, is a body of a nonprofit and civic organization and churches, so all come together, uh, to raise money for the holiday assistance program. So we're gonna give toys and gift card to the childrens, and especially the childrens from Hawthorne School District, all the eleven schools will be, parents will come with their kids to pick up toys and gift cards. So, uh, fourteen zero two five Cordary at the Jim Thorpe Park at one P M. on Tuesday the twentieth. Again, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy all, you know, uh, all those religions out there. Uh, God is good, without God, we are nothing, so, um, and again, I want to say thank you for people to reelect me for another four years, and I will not disappoint you. So thank you and good night.
Okay. Councilwoman, uh, Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me first of all just acknowledge everybody that was in council today, providing information to the public, from, uh, Chamber of Commerce holiday events to, uh, turkey and toy giveaway on the twenty-third, um, with regards to the Veterans Member of Family Thursday fif- the fifteenth from twelve to one, for those, uh, wanting more information on veteran services, and including the Caregiver Act, very important, especially for those that, um, we care for at home. Um, the Winter Wonderland is this Saturday at the Hawthorne Memorial Center from four to nine. Um, the home, um, decorating contest has been extended by one day for tomorrow, so there's still opportunities for those that are interested in, um, participating in our holiday, um, home holiday, um, event. Um, you have one more day to do that. Um, I also want to acknowledge, um, our newly, our newly elected, uh, this evening, um, Councilmember Montero for your reelection, Councilmember, Councilwoman Katrina Ma- uh, Manning for your, um, election, more importantly, your win, uh, and, um, to our newly city treasurer and city clerk, congratulations to you all, and, uh, I look forward, um, to working with you and just learning a little bit more about your style. Everybody, everyone has a style, and I, I look forward to just kind of also learning myself. So thank you, uh, for your service already. I'd like to provide some directives, if I would, so if you could just please take note. Um, I want to direct our city manager, city attorney to please work on drafting an ordinance, excuse me, drafting an ordinance with timelines for newly elected and outgoing for a smooth transition, uh, including time to get their offices and workspaces cleaned and ready for occup- occupancy. Uh, please work on this, especially after experiencing tonight, um, some being defiant and disrespectful with regards to transition, and it should be a, a helpful one, not a difficult one. And so I just want to make sure that we have something on the books that folks understand moving forward as an elected, how important it is to be part of a team and understand what the transition is and how it works and how everyone's time needs to be respected. I also would like to bring back to the council the Hawthorne Business Expo for assignment and, uh, ask for the removal of any appointments to that position, including all committees for assignment to the new council, and, um, for new council colleagues, opportunities to serve. And with that, um, want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday. I can't say enough with our Operation Gobble, I still get calls saying what a great event that was and how that was so helpful to families. I look forward to, um, the holiday toy giveaway that we're gonna be hosting here at City Hall on the twenty-second, starting at one-thirty. There's gonna be lots of toys and goodies for families. Uh, please register as for those that are Hawthorne residents, um, just making sure that, um, residents first, and then any others, I will be more than happy to look to help you too. Um, thank you to, um, our leaders that are here this evening in, um, faith and business and city departments, and to Chief Ishi, who's leaving us, I wish you well, sir. Thank you for your service, um, well done, and look forward to, um, the new leadership and to our finance department for providing us, um, our, um, current balance. I, I looked at that real quick, but, um, I look forward to, uh, a new day, and I can't say enough. And thank you, Vaughn. I know it's difficult at times, um, it's, I think, gonna be even more difficult, because, you know, again, new styles, new ideas, and, you know, five minds don't often think alike. And to, um, our city attorney, thank you for your efforts, uh, keeping us right, but more importantly, providing us, um, general law information and, um, things that we could ultimately, um, work on and use discretion on, and that's something I look forward to doing in, in providing for the residents of Hawthorne. There is a homeless, um, resource center that we just opened in, um, Hawthorne Memorial Park. It's gonna provide intake, it's gonna provide referrals, assistance, and it's gonna provide housing. So I want, uh, the city of Hawthorne to know, especially those that are calling and asking for help, those that are homeless, but more importantly, reporting homeless, that we're doing all that we can to support our homeless. Just a couple of weeks ago, we did the grand opening of our pellet shelter housing, which is gonna house about thirteen individuals, and now we have a resource center to make sure that our, uh, they're being processed, you know, in intake and being given services. I also want to direct to see how we could implement an overnight capacity at the back lot of where the center is at. Uh, it's an overnight, um, protection, if you will. Um, I was homeless too, two years living in a vehicle, not knowing where to spend the night, uh, uh, on any given night. And just to know that we could use the parking lot in the back over by the trailer to have, um, safe parking for families that need to feel safe and sleep until the next morning so they can re- get their services and reach, uh, the things that they need, uh, accessibly through the trailer. So, um, again, just pushing hard, trying hard to bring new things, things that have long been overdue in the city of Hawthorne, and for folks, folks to tell me and to think that we don't have issues here in Hawthorne such as homeless, yes, we do. And so, um, I'm, I'm glad that the city recognizes that, focus on the council here, especially Councilmember Montero, that's been a warrior, uh, for years, um, understands the needs, and, uh, I'm gonna continue to bring items of importance that matter most to families, and this is one of them. So thank you so much for tonight and look forward to working with all of you elected.
Mayor Bulton?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to first thank the community for coming out and supporting, uh, tonight's council meeting and just witnessing, um, your elected representatives being, uh, sworn in and installed, uh, and just in general, participating in, in this process. I always believe that, that the way that, or, you know, a city is successful is through community engagement and coming out here and making your voice serve is important. I want to thank staff for all their hard work, it's been a great year, a lot of things we've accomplished, been a lot of good fun, a lot of good drama, and, and I want to thank you for your commitment to the city, um, our city manager, our city attorney, air, all of our staff members, uh, outgoing chief, uh, just want to thank all of you guys for your, for your work and your commitment. Um, you know, it's work, it, it really is work, and oftentimes, it brings you here at evenings and weekends and, and doing a lot of stuff, and we definitely appreciate it, and the community appreciates it. I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, uh, Happy Kwanzaa, uh, Happy Hanukkah, um, hope everybody, uh, enjoys their time with their family. Um, it's awesome. And I just want to say a couple of words to, to our new, you know, our newly elected, um, Mr. Montero, congratulations. Uh, it says a lot to get reelected, right? You know, people can get elected, when you're reelected, it says a lot, right? And so, uh, congratulations, uh, to, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Katrina Manning, congratulations. Uh, as you say, you've worked hard over a number of years to, to make this happen, and you won with a commanding victory. Uh, people have spoken loud and clear, and they appreciate your, your platform, what you stand for, look forward to, um, working with you and whatever you look to accomplish in the city of Hawthorne. Um, I want to give my kudos to Dana Williams Hunter. Um, let me tell you guys about Dana. Uh, during the middle of the campaign, uh, her ex-husband passed away. Uh, they were married for, I think, over twenty-five, twenty-five years, and, uh, you know, they share kids, grandkids together, she had to go to, to, uh, Ohio to bury him, and he was the first black police officer of his, uh, hi- in his, his town. And, you know, her mom's dealing with, uh, with cancer, and she takes her mom to her chemo treatments and looks after her mom, and all of this in the middle of a campaign. Um, I'm so inspired by her because, um, I'm so used to people giving excuses, and she was a complete antithesis of that. Uh, she worked hard, uh, in pursuing, uh, this victory, regardless of what was going on in her life, there was no excuses at all, didn't ask for them, didn't ask for pity, and she sacrificed a lot, worked really hard, uh, and, and I commend you for that. It's, it's just, you know, it's very, uh, inspirational. Uh, and to Marie, uh, Horndexter Hornback, you know, she's dealing with a lot as well, uh, with her kids in college, uh, and high school, job, her own health, and, and made no excuses and continued to, uh, to, um, to work hard. She actually applied for appointment to this position two years ago and, and did not get that appointment, and she decided not to give up and decided to run for this office, and she took it from somebody. And I always appreciate, you know, somebody with that kind of warrior spirit. Um, you know, running for office is hard, and, um, you know, for, for these, these, these champions who are nu- new to the elected official life, uh, I'm so excited about how this is going to change your life and change the way that people look at you and, and, and treat you, change the way that your, your family looks at you and interacts with you, uh, and the, uh, the example you get to set, um, and the ability to, to represent your community and make an impact, you know, in the lives of thousands of people is something that is magical. And so I, I congratulate, I congratulate you guys for, for your, your win, and I'm excited to see, you know, how your lives change as a result of this. Um, got a couple of directives. Um, I've had a lot of residents, including myself, question these, these, um, pockets in Hawthorne that don't belong to Hawthorne. So we got a donut in Hawthorne between, um, the four oh five freeway and Inwood Avenue. We got a cutout off of like, I think, one thirty-fifth and Crenshaw. These belong to the, to the county. And I was just hoping, uh, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, if you can provide the council with, um, maybe some research on what it would mean and look like to try to annex that land and make that Hawthorne, um, so what the process would be, what the cost would be, uh, what would be the benefits of any, what kind of additional revenue would come from doing that? I know one of the benefits of that donut, uh, in Hawthorne is we'd control Inwood Avenue and, uh, because we know the county's gonna be, uh, licensing cannabis dispensaries in the coming future, and that's one place that they, that dispensaries have popped up, and we annex that land, we could control Inwood Avenue on both sides of the street, and of course have greater control on how many dispensaries are in our city. But, you know, report on, on the pros and the cons, and I'm also curious to know what the size of the population in both of those areas are, um, and, you know, any other demographics that you can provide, though. You know, it might make sense, might, might not, but love to get some information about that process and, and what that might look like. And, uh, and lastly, could you, um, have somebody give us a, an update on the, the veterans' housing project on Cordary? And just let us know where that's at, that's been the process since I got elected two years ago, and I don't think I've seen any dirt moved yet. So, um, and that's all, thank you.
A quick, quick question to you, David. So you're talking about Wisburn and Del Air?
I'm just talking about, um, not Del Air, like where Del Air Park is, but I'm talking about maybe Wisburn is known as between four oh five and, and Inwood Avenue, between, uh, Rosecrans and Elskondo, so that donut, and then on Crenshaw-
Yeah.
Right, where-
One thirty-fifth.
On one thirty-fifth, we're kind of cutscene, it's a little square eaten out of, uh, out of our city. Uh, you know, who knows how these things are, are created? Yeah, and so tho- those two areas specifically.
Everybody good?
Thank you.
I just wanted to say one more thing. Um, I just have to say that this was a very difficult and hard campaign, and Councilwoman Angie English, thank you for supporting me and making phone calls for me, uh, to their Spanish community. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your support, uh, during my campaign. Thank you.
All right, folks, so, uh, we're at the end of the meeting, it's about, uh, nine o'clock, so I want to join also in the course of support for our new, uh, council colleague, our new treasurer, our new city clerk, and, uh, reelected Councilmember Montero. Um, I think, uh, our collective efforts should always be, um, what will benefit the community? Um, I know the dynamics sometimes here is, uh, can get a little bit, uh, dicey, the dicey waters, um, but we need to just make sure that we're really thinking about how the communities benefited, uh, benefiting from this. The majority of the residents benefit, that's our purpose here, no other purpose. If not, the community will be able to see it. And, uh, you're right, re-elections do prove, you know, what you say, that people, uh, are, you know, validated for what they have done, but elections also weed out those who haven't produced and, uh, are just, uh, in it for, uh, alternate reasons. weed out those who haven't produced and are just in it for alternate reasons. So we need to make sure that we all stay focused on our community. And with that, thank you, Councilmember Montero, for putting your name out in the ring. Definitely excited to work with you. We're going to have a new dynamic altogether, but with continuity of ideas that you've already put forth. So you'll have my support on those things. Councilwoman Katrina Manning, you're right. It's been a while. And you're right, today, I think I ran into you when you were giving, getting the official swearing and you reminded me of how Sophia rode with me on one of those parades, I think it was the kids parade in Landale. And so, you know, we go way back. So it was a matter of time. And you've worked hard and you're here. So let's move forward and make some good things happening. And the ladies, city clerk and city treasurer, I've known Marie probably since I got elected as well, along with some of my council member colleagues that know you through the Holly Park neighborhood work. So I'm glad to see that you are here. Definitely somebody that we're gonna, will be able to work with very well. And I hear you have some great ideas, Ms. City Clerk. I know I barely met you this time around. I think you came and offered a product for us under financial literacy, I think it was. So that was my first exposure. So definitely, there's no question that your professionalism and your ideas on helping the community are there through your role as city clerk. So I want to congratulate everybody here on their reelection and on their election. So let's give them a final round of applause. So let's take a look.
Mayor, can I just real quick, just say thank you to Diana, our city clerk-
Yep.
-before Ms. Dana came in. Thank you, Diana. Appreciate you. I know it's hard work and thank you for stepping up to the plate. And thank you, Juan, for working together as a team to assure all of our products are coming out of the city clerk's office correctly. Ts crossed, Is dotted.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there is nothing further from council members or staff, this meeting is adjourned at 9:02.